Okay, good evening. Milford Planning Board Meeting of September 3rd. We get the minutes of the joint meeting and the -- where do we need it?
I make a motion we accept the minutes from the meeting of page 624 and also the joint meeting of the comprehensive plan on page 1324.
I'll second that.
Moved in second, we accept approved the minutes. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of four. We got no any one Ps. You're going to continue amended site plan for 21 to 23, 221 to 223 Main Street.
Yeah, it's continued from the last time. You've got to pack it there. And I stopped chasing and of course I didn't hear a peep since the last meeting. So my recommendation, if you don't mind, my recommendation is to approve the site plan based on my sketch plan that I had submitted for your review at the last meeting, which created the Choker Isles and got the traffic aisles cleaned up with the caveat that they incorporate a modified version of what they had submitted at last meeting for their dumpster location. These substances where they're showing it in yellow on that second sheet, but rotated slightly so that it squares up with the new drive aisle, similar to what you and I talked about, Dave.
Yeah.
So my recommendation, since they're obviously not interested, is to approve it subject to those two items. And then they'll have him fix it and I can sign it once they fix it.
Any questions from the board?
Just quickly, I know Larry just prior to I had a quick question on it. Can you just go over quickly though, we talked about, just kind of, we'd have to turn the proposed area, just so you make sure you have your 10 feet off and then you also just to ensure that you have appropriate clearance from the parking spots?
Well, that and so that, yeah, it rotates it so that it's squared with the new drive aisle that's established with the perpendicular stalls facing west, because the trucks are going to head in. And there's no reason to make them try and turn around back there, just let them drive up there, pick up the dumpster and dump it and then back straight out into the broader area in the middle of the lot. Because I think that's how they're going to probably do it anyway. But yeah, they've already shown what 10 feet off would be. So from what that yellow area looks at, it's a smaller dumpster enclosure area than it was originally proposed, but whatever, it would still, it would rotate slightly counterclockwise so that the westerly side of it would slide to the south a little bit, just so that it lines up. But it's still going to work fine with parking as I'd propose it, heading parking facing west in that area.
And that gives the appropriate clearance from the dumpster to that?
Correct.
Yep.
Correct. And it's actually less impervious surface to it that way as well.
Yes, the time of the dumpster is going to be, they couldn't actually dump it, it's not going to be one of those pocket spots that being used anyways, it should be.
Well, overall, yeah.
They didn't contact you at all since the last meeting, Larry?
Nope, none of the three principals or the engineer.
That's fine, if that's what they wanted, then that's on them. Make a motion we approve the amended site plan subject to the revision zone shown on Larry's sketch plan for the drive aisles and also the updated dumpster location as shown on their plan.
I'll second.
We're moved in seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of four. Now we got amended site plan for 146 South Main Street, Milford Ceramic Tile.
One paragraph quickly.
Yeah.
Apptons requesting amended site plan approval for 146 South Main Street to allow for the addition of indoor batting cages on the second floor of the building. Specifically, the proposal is to add four batting cages and two turf practice areas inside the building on the second floor. This is the east of the building above Planet Fitness. The architectural access board approval letter is attached to the packet. Also, it's estimated that the proposed use will require 20 off-street parking spaces for total parking requirements of 318. The parking area with proposed restriping will contain 324 spaces. The amended site plan does include the previously approved area for the commercial car wash. All other applicable requirements appear to be met. I recommend approval submitted. We got a favorable from water, favorable from fire. It includes the AAD decision and I think I saw a late favorable from highway.
Yeah.
I didn't have anything because they're not proposing any changes on the outside.
Excellent. Gentlemen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Just for the record, John Federico with Gareer &amp; Hellman. And tonight I'm here with Gino. Gino, I'm sorry, I'm going to butcher your last name.
D. J. Leonardo.
He is with Milford Ceramic Tile. And Gino is the applicant for the project. So as Larry's mentioned, Gino is looking to get a couple of practice turf fields and some batting cages and some already vacant space that's above the Planet Fitness as a part of the most recent site plan amendment when they had come in for the car wash portion. We do have excess spaces and about 26 excess in total. So for what we're going to be proposing here, we don't need to make any sort of significant changes or anything like that. So if there's any questions by the board, you know, I'll obviously turn it over. I know Larry's pretty good with the packets, but I did have a couple of 11 by 17 plans, if you guys would like those at all.
Larry, did you say it was going to be restripped? In your letter?
Yeah, that east street portion.
Yeah, so as a part of the previous site plan approval, they had called out that this portion through here is going to be restripped. So I just made sure that our plan had that reflected on it. In terms of Gino's project though, we're not proposing any additional restriping. I did catch a minor error with the last engineer's plans. The spaces that were hatched off for handicap access, they had originally counted as parking spaces. So I did have to add in a few small ones here, but that's intended to be handled as a part of the whole restriping on that left-hand side. But that was the only minor correction on that plan.
Pleasure, the board?
I don't have any issue, don't think I want to make sure that the restriping gets done before we get an occupancy permit, so we're just making a condition of approval.
And where some of that parking was also tied in for the car wash, does any of that fall on the car wash to be completed as well? Or as long as we can confirm that we have the appropriate amount of spaces minus what's required for the car wash, would that be sufficient enough there?
I think everything outside of what is proposed for the car wash is.
Yeah, otherwise, it's up to you. I mean, what I'm saying is you're doing it on this property.
Okay.
Before you can use this property, the parking needs to be correct.
I'm sure the landlord's going to restripe it for the car wash though.
Yep.
Just talk to the landlord and say that it has to be done before.
Okay.
Before the occupancy is given?
Yes.
Okay.
How'd you guys get through the access board? That's a tough job.
It was, a lot of people have said that and I thought they were very fair. I would go through and having just explained it to them, what it was going to be used for, they came back with some questions that were reasonable, gave me reasonable time to research it and come back and it was, they were surprising, I was expecting of, everything I've heard, I should say, was.
Well, it's not, I think in your decision, because I went through the decision, it's not a public space.
Right.
That's the key.
Yes.
If it wasn't a public space, so they were fine because they were able to say it was for these clubs. And I would assume those clubs, you can't really be a member of those clubs unless you're able to access those spaces because you're going to be hitting baseballs and things like that, so you're not going to be in that situation. So I would assume that's why the decision was that.
Yeah, the factor, one of the factors is because it's a club sport and the ability to compete and to essentially make the team was one of the driving factors of their choice.
Okay. Make a motion that we approve the amended site plan subject to no occupancy permit until all parking spaces have been restripped as shown on the plan.
Second that.
Moved in second, that we approve the amended site plan with the stipulation of the striping. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? unanimous of four.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Larry? Your zoning.
This is my favorite one.
Well, given the procedural requirements and the way they'd already set up their meeting dates, there's going to be no way for you to see this and send it to them and request a remand. So I sent it to them and asked them to refer it to you, which they did. So now, because the state's requiring us to comply with this and we only have, well, now less than six months to do it, that time would have run out before the next annual town meeting. So by doing this, we can get it on the October 21st special, because there's going to be just enough time to have your public hearing on October 1st, which still gives you one more meeting just in case before the October 21st special town meeting. Because our October meetings are on the 1st and the 15th. So the public hearing will be on the 1st. I'll get the notice out. When am I doing the notice? Either next Tuesday or the following Tuesday, but at any rate, I'll get the notice out to the newspaper in time because it needs to be published on the 17th and the 24th. So yeah, on the 10th. I'll send a legal notice out to the newspaper on the 10th and it'll publish on the 17th and the 24th of this month and then your public hearing will be October 1st. But as I relay on the second page, the actual, my original memo to the select board, given the new legislation, this, in my estimation, is the effect it's going to have on our zoning bylaw and the effect it's going to have on future development in town. So to the extent that we can clarify it and define it and control it as much as possible, this seems to me to be the way to do it. But obviously, as we go through the process reviewing it, potentially it could be amended on the floor, you know, with a motion. But if it needs to be amended at all, that would be my suggestion on how to do it. Because we've seen with other amendments by other people trying to amend things on the floor is really screwy. So I want to try to avoid that, but there's very little time before they actually publish the warrant for us to be fiddling with it. So if it's any consolation, Town Council and I, well, Jerry and I and Brian and I had gone over this before it got submitted even to the select board so they could refer it to you. So it's not like we just totally made it up out of thin air. The state did that part for us.
Succeeded on.
We had to, yeah, and we had to pick it up from there. So that's why it looks the way it looks.
I think there's already been people asking about it.
Oh, yeah.
Multiple people have come to our office.
Oh, yeah.
Asking.
Multiple readings.
This is huge.
Coming to.
Well, that's scary, I know. This is going to be developed.
Right, I will say that the ones that have come thus far have been people that like in-law apartment type of things instead of basically looking how this affects the in-law apartment.
Well, effectively, those have been become legal.
Right.
Now, instead of the fact that they rent everything, even if you turn them into rental units.
But you don't, we didn't have to do that. I wanted to add that.
Yes.
Because you'll see that in there.
Mm-hmm.
I wanted to say that specifically, even though I didn't like it, but that, if it passes like this, then that clarifies that issue going forward. And so there aren't going to be any more in-law apartments, there aren't going to be any more supplement suites, there aren't going to be any more granny flats. It's either a single-family house or it's one that has this. The other thing, and the legislation, or part of it anyway, is attached. You can see how screwed up they got it.
I mean, to think that they approved something like this on effectively, I mean, all the other crap is bullshit as far as I'm concerned about money and stuff. They approved this on a two-line statement that says we're going to allow this. No, to me, and that's about the amount of thought process this state put into it.
Yep.
They thought about, you know, nothing.
Right.
And we had this discussion at the school building committee. I mean, how's that going to affect our student loan? Oh, we don't know. Are they going to, are they going to give us more money if we have a chance for more student?
Probably not.
Doubt it. It's like, well, we're not going to think about any of that. We're just going to prove this because somehow we think this is going to bring housing down.
Well, so.
It's not.
So those, all those complications, when you start looking through it and then you look at it from the standpoint of, well, what does it really say we can and can't do with it? Okay, we got to amend our bylaw, or we should, to recognize it because otherwise we're really screwed. So the thing would be, how do you as clearly as possible regulate it and do it in a way that avoids, you know, the rabbit holes that you end up getting stuck going down just trying to follow what they said? So you're able to regulate it and require site plans. So as much of a pain as it's going to be, it's better to have a site plan come.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And at least make them be serious about what they're doing because that site plan review will trigger the departmental review. So sewer and water get to see it way before somebody starts digging up the backyard. So as much as possible.
And more to housing.
We tried to.
Yeah.
Okay, more to housing.
No, they'll lose up to systems, all the ones that aren't sewed. They're not going to be doing this.
Right, so to clarify that and to make sure that short-term rentals are prohibited, to clarify that this is one, one ADU. And based on this, you're not eligible to have an ADU if you already have a two-family house. Or you can't put an ADU in Walden Woods in a PRD. So there's some thresholds that get accounted for with approaching it like this, I think. As much as I hate to write stuff like this, if you're going to do it, then.
Would we just result the whole town to commercial industrial and then get rid of the, get rid of the fact that no one can have it because everybody's in existing non-conforming use and they have no rights in those, there's no essential rights in those zones.
Well, that's not going to work either.
Well, the state says you can do it a single, you know, two-family, three-family. So we can certainly put in some regulations there. I think if you.
I don't think so. If what it does, the way they wrote it and I clarified it, I think I did a better job of writing the law I don't like than they did. It basically, the way the law reads, you can have a separate building. You can have a second house.
Correct.
As long as it's little enough.
Right.
So we wanted to clarify that as well and just say it in here instead of the mess that the state did. So anyway, you can tell them.
I got a couple of suggestions for, you know, for discussion. One, it should be owner-occupant.
You can't.
Two, it cannot be sold separately.
You can't.
No?
You can't. That's why I thought with the statute.
We can't be more restrictive?
Nope. Nope, that's why this looks the way it looks is because it's literally right out of what they said.
You can sell the house separately?
That makes no sense to do that.
No, I don't think you can sell a house separately. You can't, you can't put a restriction on who can, who can live.
Who can live.
That I understand.
Sell a single lot, I don't believe this created two lots. There's no, there's no two lots, there's no two buildings, there's no, it's a single.
Right, it is two buildings, but you can't, but there's no legal way to sell one building on a lot.
As long as that's the case.
Currently.
Well, the section 12 deals with the definition. Section 13 gets into the other restrictions on us. So I think it's in there.
Yeah, there's got to be a way of stopping that because effectively what you could do is you could continue, if you could do that and you could create another lot, then you would go through the process again.
Well, yeah.
As long as, as long as you have enough space to put it in.
But so can you, so you can't, you're right, you can't sell, but could you condoize it? Does that?
Well, this, down online, starting on line 827 on page 38 of the 126 whole thing.
Yeah, that's the owner occupancy, right.
Right, so it says, "The use of land or structures for accessory dwelling unit under this paragraph so not require only owner occupancy of either the accessory dwelling unit or the principal dwelling."
That's crazy.
Yes, that's crazy.
Yep.
Yeah, that's the state.
That's the state. So anyway, but as I said.
Again, this was not, this was not done so that you can have your relatives listed. This was done because they thought that this somehow is going to bring down the price of housing in Massachusetts, which they're totally, it's not going to do that, it's only going to make a few people rich is what it's going to do. But that's besides, we can get into that discussion afterwards, but that's why it was done.
It's going to get you more units. Other than making their buddies money, it gets them more units.
Yeah, the state's well on their way to having plenty of units because everybody that has money is moving out. The only people that are going to stay here are the people that are going to be going into the accessory dwelling units.
Yeah, because nobody in their right minds is going to buy a new single-family house because they no longer have any protection for what the neighbors are going to do. So they're all going to go to some other state, which is what they keep crying about. Oh, people are losing population, we're losing population. Well, you're really going to lose it now.
So there's nothing that we can do to say that the entry should be in the front of the house?
Nope, no, no.
Because?
Nope.
Because it's whatever they said.
Yes. But I would assume there is, they cannot sell them separately, they're not two separate parcels, they're.
But no, but you can condo them out. If you have a two-family house, you can condo it out.
Right, but once you condo it out, then no longer.
It's not an accessory thing.
It's not an accessory anymore.
Yeah, well, I, yeah, I don't think that they're going to endlessly be able to do that.
Right, that was, I guess that was.
It's not. And I'm wondering, do we write that? If they somehow into this, that if you do have an accessory, it has to stay as one unit or whatever.
Yeah, that'll be something that, you know, as we, as we go through these things and.
Yeah, well, we should do that and let the state say, no, you can't do that or yay. But the question would then become, well, if you somehow allow them to have two parcels, then they can do it again.
Well, we're not saying two parcels, that's different. Lots and parcels are different.
Yeah.
I think he's just saying.
No, I'm saying if somebody tries to go ahead after they build an accessory unit separately, that they somehow try to go back. I mean, zoning is still zoning, it still meets, you can't have that as a separate, as a new parcel because it won't meet the zone.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean somebody can't own the structure. They can condo the structures out.
Yeah, well, but they can't, they have nothing to go back to and say they can get another accessory unit, that's what I'm saying.
Right, right. But as I say, I'll try to find out what the cutoff date is because these are, you know, as long as there are our articles, easy for me to say, then, you know, before the warrant gets published, if we need to change the text, we can.
Yeah. Also, the RV zone, it's still going to, if it doesn't meet the setbacks, it's going to have to go for a variance, which we got a, that's the only problem we have is a zoning board.
Yeah.
The problems.
Which that's all, yeah, useless anyway, but.
We know where that's going, babe.
I understand.
But I mean, that's.
Well, there's, at least there's fire code when it comes to, if you're having a separate building.
You have a separate building, yes.
Then there's fire codes that'll require, yeah, some separation.
Certain offsets between buildings.
Between the buildings.
Yeah.
Is there someplace where short-term is defined?
Yeah, the state.
Okay.
In fact, in fact, there.
Twenty-eight days or something. Twenty-nine days.
No, we even refer to it.
Yeah.
Short-term, chapter 64, G, second one. That's, when we don't have anything better to do, that's another thing I think we need to adopt because Airbnb's are miniature hotels.
Right.
And the people that are doing that the most are the realtors in town. Our friends and neighbors are screwing over our neighborhoods even worse than they are when they sell, when they sell the units. Anyway, so we can do that some other day for annual town meeting. But anyway, what I'm getting back to is the calendar. So I'll try and verify what the cutoff date is going to be on publishing the warrant. So if we see something that should legitimately be changed sooner rather than later, we'll try and do that. Otherwise, we'll just amass whatever.
Yeah, it's the worst.
And have a motion.
Yeah, we can, yeah, you can do it as a motion and what we need to do, we have to do that, is make sure that we have copies of the motion. Everybody's saying, no, it's different than what's in the warrant, it was what was given to you on your seat when you went in, so you don't have to go through that whole.
Exactly. So, yeah, even though it's going to, at some point, it's going to be, the warrant's going to be done, the text of the article isn't done until the motion's made and voted on, so. Well, there's some point, well, almost none.
We're going to have to tweak it eventually anyway, I'm sure.
Huh?
I'm sure eventually in the future, we'll have to tweak it a little bit.
Oh, yeah.
The state actually, this they actually wrote, which that may take them three or four years to figure out anyway.
Well, they're supposed to be figuring that out now, but.
So give me a year or two, then Larry, this is going to happen tomorrow, I guarantee that.
No, but I'm talking about DHCD or whatever they're calling themselves these days are supposed to be coming up with regulations, so. That's what, but anyway, that's why I went ahead and did what I did and at least this will protect you as much as.
At least there'll be some tracing of where these things are and stuff, you know, legally, which hopefully the state doesn't think that's too difficult for people to handle. Oh, no, that's stopping from doing, I mean.
Well, their law says you can have site plan review, so, okay, we'll do that. So the next meeting is two weeks. It's an ad hoc, ad hoc committee meeting on the 17th, so it'll be a gender item. Yeah, and I'm not sure, who knows, maybe by then.
You don't have to, we don't have to make a motion, we don't have to have a motion to put it in the, to advertise or anything.
To do what?
We don't need a motion for you to advertise a.
No.
Okay.
Your other vote early on during your election reorganization, once again authorized for you to do all that stuff. Okay, so you didn't have to, so we should be. So we shouldn't be all set, I don't remember, maybe it's in the minutes, I said in the minutes, what the next meeting is going to entail.
So the next, next meeting's the 17th?
Yeah, I forget what it is, what their next topic was. Did he say?
I mean, it's the first meeting in October.
That's the public hearing. You're no fun.
Hey.
So hey, I don't, I don't see it, anyway.
Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Moved and seconded and adjourned, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Closed, unanimous of four. Unite.
So who made the motion?
I did, to adjourn.
Who seconded?